Jay, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. Please stand. Your table. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you like to call roll?
Absolutely. Thank you, Vice Chair Morrissey. Chair Rizales is absent today. Vice Chair Morrissey.
Here.
Commissioner Obama.
Present.
Commissioner Anthony.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Ogden and Commissioner Malik.
Present.
Let the record show that six of the seven planning commissioners are here and we do have a quorum.
Okay. Do we have any matters not on the agenda?
Vice Chair Morrissey, we do not have any.
Let's approve last planning commission meetings. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I would make a motion to approve minutes.
I get a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, vote please.
The record shows that the motion passes 4-0 with Commissioners Morrissey and Ogden abstaining. Okay, I see no issues on the consent calendar or on transportation items, so we could go
right into public hearings. Could we have disclosures? I visited the site, read the planning staff report, and Commissioner Ogden.
Yes.
Could we have your disclosure on item number four?
I have.
Okay. Jay?
I've read the documents. I'm familiar with the area.
Okay.
Read the report, familiar with the area.
Okay. Commissioner. Kevin?
Read staff report and went by the area and I am familiar with the area.
Commissioner Obama. The same.
Vice Chair Morrissey, just as an order of housekeeping, could you read the title of it? So for the record, so the.
Sure.
We know that we're talking about public hearing, item number four.
Okay. Public item number four is, I can read that, consideration of development plan and conditional use permit for the construction and operation of an approximately 19,348 square foot fire station and associated site improvements, including driveways, parking spaces, emergency diesel generator, fuel storage and landscaping located at 1282 Rocky Point Drive. The 2.15 acre project site, which is currently vacant, is located within the Rancho del Oro specific plan and has a general plan land use designation of Rancho del Oro Industrial, a zoning designation of planned development, light industrial, and is within the Ivy Ranch, Rancho del Oro Neighborhood Planning Area. 1282 Rocky Point Drive Fire Station Number Eight, and the applicant is the city of Oceanside. And so Shannon, would you like to make your presentation for the city?
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. Vice Chair Morrissey, Planning Commissioner Shannon Vitale, Senior Planner in the Development Services Department. I'm here tonight to discuss Agenda Item Number Four, the construction of a new fire station for the city of Oceanside. The project before you consists of a development plan and a conditional use permit to construct and operate an approximately 19,000 square foot fire station. The 2.15 acre site, which is outlined in red on the slide, is located at 1282 Rocky Point Drive. Property, which is city-owned, has a general plan designation of Rancho del Oro Industrial, a zoning designation of Planned Development One Light Industrial, is within the Pacific Coast Business Park and the Ivy Ranch, Rancho del Oro Neighborhood Planning Area. The site is located at the corner of Old Grove Road and Tressle Street. Surrounding land uses include the Kaiser Medical Offices to the west, multifamily residential to the north, professional offices to the east, and industrial warehouses to the south. The existing Fire Station Eight is operated out of a leased building located at 1935 Avenida del Oro. This location is temporary and the lease expires in 2025. Rather than renew the lease, in February of 2022, the city council gave direction to proceed with the design of a permanent Fire Station Eight, building located at the project site. The site would be shared with the Water Utilities Department with the intent of utilizing the southern portion of the site for the construction of a new recycled water reservoir. The project consists of a development plan to approve the construction of a new two-story 19,348 square foot fire station with apparatus space and associated site improvements. An emergency generator and fuel tank would also be installed onsite. The new facility would accommodate up to 10 firefighting and paramedic personnel and will provide the necessary housing and training space needed for onsite staff. The current Fire Station Eight facility has three firefighting personnel who would be relocated to the new facility. It is important to note that although the new fire station will accommodate additional firefighters, at this time, there are no plans to increase staffing levels or equipment at this station. However, the station has been designed to accommodate future personnel and future equipment that's necessary to maintain adequate levels of service for the city over the next 75 years. Pursuant to the zoning ordinance, a conditional use permit is required to operate the public safety facility. Access to the site would be provided off three driveways located off Tressle Street and Rocky Point Drive. The public entrance would be located off Tressle Street with four guest parking spaces located immediately in front of the main entrance. Fire department vehicles would access the site from Rocky Point Drive and exit onto Tressle Street when responding to an emergency. 20 parking spaces are located behind the building and are available for onsite personnel. These spaces would be covered and have solar panels. Approximately 34% of the site would be landscaped. In addition to the landscaping provided along the street frontages, planer boxes and drought-resistant ground cover would be planted onsite. The project proposes to plant an additional 27, 24-inch box trees within the adjacent right-of-ways to provide a total tree canopy of 14%, which exceeds the minimum tree canopy percentage required by the city. The southerly portion of the site would be reserved for the future construction of the water reservoir. The fire station would be two stories with a maximum height of 37 feet 6 inches and large apparatus space to accommodate firefighting equipment. The project reflects a contemporary architectural style that's designed to complement other office and industrial buildings in the Pacific Coast Business Park. Building materials would include metal accent pieces and glazed windows. The architectural plans were reviewed by the Pacific Coast Business Park and they approved the plans stating that it would complement the existing buildings within the business As detailed in the staff report, the project has been reviewed for compliance with the city's general plan, the zoning ordinance, and the California Environmental Quality Act. The project complies with the land use element goals for balanced land use, public safety, fire hazards, and architecture, and complies with the energy and climate action element goals for tree canopy and renewable energy. As shown on this slide, the project complies with all applicable development standards for the Pacific Coast Business Park and the IL zoning district. The project also complies with the city's climate action plant ordinances regarding renewable energy, EV charging and urban forestry requirements. In 2005, the city certified an environmental impact report for the development of the Pacific Coast Business Park. In 2009, the city certified a supplemental environmental impact report that modified the projected land use allocation envisioned in the 2005 EIR. Since the 2005 EIR and 2009 supplemental EIR did not include the proposed fire station use, an addendum to the EIR was prepared as part of this project. The addendum indicates the project would not result in any new impacts not previously identified nor result in an increase in the severity of any impacts previously identified and analyzed under CEQA. A notice of application sign was placed on the property, as shown on this slide, and has maintained there the entire project review. There was also a notice mailed out to all property owners within a 1,500-foot radius and all tenants within a 100-foot radius when the project application was received by staff. The project team held a community outreach meeting on November 2nd of this year. There was one person in attendance who vouchs support for the project. Other than that, staff has received no comments on the project. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the planning commission consider the addendum prepared and approve the development plan D 2223 and conditional use permit CUP 2230 by adopting Resolution Number 2023-P30. So that concludes my presentation. We have our Fire Chief Parsons here as well as the project design team. Should you have any questions for us?
Thank you, Shannon. Do we have any questions for Shannon before Jay? Go ahead.
Yeah. Hi, Shannon. What's the increased capacity for future requirements? So you mentioned that it's built to support 10 firefighters and I can't remember the number of apparatus there, but what's the future capacity?
Commissioner Malik, Commissioners, so the existing station is three firefighters and I believe one engine, and I'll let Chief Parsons explain as well, but the future station would accommodate up to 10 firefighting personnel and a four apparatus bay plus a battalion chief vehicle. But Chief Parsons is going to cry.
Good evening. David Parsons, Fire Chief. Pleasure to be here. Thanks for taking on this project tonight. Can I?
Sure.
Expand on that a little bit?
Absolutely, please.
So let me give an example. Fire Station One is over 100 years old, and you can see the difference between what's Fire Station One and where we're moving to with the new construction that's just right here across the street. The issue is that we, the city's growing exponentially. We have ladder trucks to be placed specifically around the city for best effect. The issue that on the east side, we have our ladder truck is currently stationed at Fire Station Six, which is on Santa Fe Road, just the far, far east side, really on the border of the Vista. Where the target hazards are for the city are in the industrial areas of where this is going to be placed, the hospital at Tri-City, and spreading those units out. We actually want to bring our ladder truck here to the coastal zone as well. So this is being designed to accommodate how we can best deploy to serve the citizens and residents of Oceanside.
Great. Thank you. Couple other questions. I may have missed it, but is the solar install concurrent with the construction or is it after construction?
Commissioner Malik, Commissioners, the solar would be installed with the carports because that's what's needed to meet the 50% renewable energy requirement. If needed, there'd be solar installed on the rooftop of the building, so the building's going to be designed to accommodate solar should it be needed at a.
Okay. And Chief, you mentioned the architecture. I think the one thing is, as you say, I know that it was concurred with by the business park, but yeah, I was just a little taken aback. I thought we'd have a little bit more creativity and do something a little bit more exciting, given we have a mission style with the downtown Station One. I'm not sure, I haven't seen the renditions for the new Station One replacement. The other station that's down by the mission has that same, so it would seem to me that in some sense as a city, we'd want to kind of follow that pattern and show some increased style. I understand trying to blend it with the existing business park, but as a city, I would hope that we would kind of set ourselves aside for something that's going to be there probably upwards of 100 years, I would think, is what our average lifespan is, probably 75 years for a building. And having had to deal with that in a different life, at Camp Pendleton as the Chief of Staff, dealing with very old buildings, but wanting to have an architectural style that flows throughout the city for city buildings, I think that's something that we should consider going forward. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Malik.
Point taken. Thank you. Commissioner Obama.
Oh, thank you. That was fast. How'd you know I was going to pass to speak? I actually concur with Commissioner Malik about the architecture. Not my favorite of all of them. Is it going to be gray or is it beige? Because I know on your, the one you showed on the screen is gray.
Looks like a motel right there.
Yeah, now it looks, yeah, it does look like a motel, but anyway, whatever. This is your choice, and I know that, I know that from last talking, remember back when, anyway, when Rick was actually the chief, he said he doesn't want to have any fancy fire stations because they're hard to maintain, so this one definitely is going to be easy to maintain. It's not too, not too much excitement going on there. But it's, I think, actually, I like the number eight the best, a little tower right there with the, that's the best part of the whole elevation. But when you said it was designed for only 10 guys, like I count, like when you count the beds, there's 24 beds and 12 bedrooms. So is it really designed for bigger than 10 guys? I mean.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Obama. Members of the commission, so a station has to be designed to accommodate shifts of personnel. So we have multiple shifts, and you'll have like two personnel might be sharing a room, only one's actually using it at a night at a time and operating opposite shifts. So hopefully that answers your question there. Regarding the architecture, I know there's some constraints based on the business park design standards. We do, it would be great if we had a particular standard that just applied to everything we did, but we also are very sensitive, maybe this one not as much, but to fit in the neighborhoods that we're in. The south, though, Fire Station looks like a house. This station looks like the downtown district. That station's going to look like its surrounding buildings, and as money becomes an object, we have to make compromises. But I can tell you, we've worked with the design team and I think they did great work for what we, what we had available to us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No much money.
Are there any other questions?
I have one just comment.
Yes.
Because I was just curious, because since I've been on the planning commission, I think I've seen three fire stations, and I haven't seen any police stations. Like we have that one that they're kind of in that temporary building that was supposed to be something that we're going to get someday. How do you guys manage this?
Well, yeah. I'll editorialize. They, they have one building that's going to cost probably five times what our, each station costs, and they have some bigger challenges they're trying to overcome, and you know, while their facility is temporary and maybe not ideal, it's functional as it is. Fire Station One, for example, does not meet any seismic standards. It does not, it's truly not a fire station, and they've had to actually alter the archways just to get a fire engine in there now. Fire Station Eight, which this will eventually replace, is an industrial building. It is not, does not meet critical facility standards, any of that stuff. There's no backup power there. It's really not a good situation. So some of these are, I would say, more critical in our case at the moment.
Okay.
But that does not take away, they have an incredible need. I think financing is the big challenge, and if you talk to council, they'll tell you that as well.
They better have the next, you know, project when we, none of their fire station. I would hope that they'll get a police station pretty soon.
But I can say they're, they're working on it and it's a high priority, so you will hopefully something, see something through.
It's good to see your firefighters getting out of that temporary facility. I'm familiar with that facility, and it's nice to see that you're doing something for their quality of life while they're on shift, so.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Yeah.
Thank you. If there's no more questions? Thank you. Do we have any requests to speak?
Vice Chair Morrissey, we do not this evening.
Well, then we'll bring it back to the planning commission and if there's any discussion. If not, we can, somebody can make a motion. Commissioner Malik.
Sure. I'll, I'll make the motion that we approve the consideration of the development plan and conditional use permit for construction and operation of the 19,000-plus square foot fire station located at 1282 Rocky Point Drive, Fire Station Number Eight, and approve the development plan.
I would second that.
Okay. Commissioner Obama, second that, if we could have a vote?
Let the record show that the motion passes unanimously.
The next item on the agenda is, City Planner, do you, are you going to take the City Planner's determination or do we go right to legislative update?
Thank you, Vice Chair Morrissey. There's no items for appeal of City Planner's determination, so we'll just go right to that discussion item number five.
Okay. So then you're on.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Morrissey, members of the planning commission. I'll try to keep this brief. There's a lot of legislation that was passed in this last legislative cycle that affects housing. In our memo that we prepared for this item, we highlighted the ones that are more likely to affect our day-to-day activities here in the planning division, and some that are just have been of some concern and questions with regard to ADUs. So I'm not going to go over every single piece of legislation listed in this memorandum, but the ones that we feel are likely to affect the way the planning division conducts business. So we'll start with SB four, which is affordable housing on faith and higher education land. It requires that upon request of an applicant, housing development project be a use by right on land owned by an independent institution of higher education or a religious institution of specified criteria are met. One thing that should be noted, a use by right means a development project that does not require a conditional use permit, planned development permit, or other discretionary local government review, although design review may be required, and is not a project when you consider in CEQA. So we can, as an example, we can get 100-unit proposed affordable housing development on a piece of land owned by a higher, by Miracoast College as an example, and we'd have to process it ministerially. So that was something to note. There are some criteria, 15 criteria that the land has to meet to be able to, eligible for this type of development. I'd read them all to you if it's the desire of the planning commission, but it's a lot of, lot of words. We certainly can make the more detailed information available to you at your pleasure.
Are there significant hurdles for them or is it, so we're kind of, it's a streamlined approach, I get that.
Yes.
And I don't want you, you don't need to go into all the details, but I guess is it, is it, is it a challenging process for them? Are there enough gates there that you're comfortable with that we're, we're able to facilitate that, that process, I guess?
Thank you for your statement, your question, Commissioner Malik. So most of the criteria have to do with compatibility. So as an example, we wouldn't cite this next to, let's see. The housing development not be located within 1,200 feet of a site that's currently heavy industrial use. So that's one example. So we talk about compatibility criteria, also land suitability criteria. Those are the crux of the criteria that would be evaluating to determine whether or not a project would be eligible to be processed under this legislation.
Thank you.
Moving on, there's SB 684. It's for subdivisions of 10 units or less. It's created 40 pieces of legislation that the bill introduced. SB 684 requires local agencies to ministerially, ministerially consider without discretionary review or hearing a parcel map or tentative and final map for a housing development project that meets certain size, density, and other requirements. The proposed subdivision must result in 10 or fewer parcels, and the proposed development project contain 10 or fewer residential units. The lot to be subdivided must be zoned for multifamily development, not larger than five acres, substantially surrounded by qualified urban uses as defined in the statute, and located in either a city that includes some portion of an urban area or an urbanized area or urban cluster in the county with a population greater than 600,000, so clearly Oceanside would qualify for this. The newly created parcels may not be smaller than 600 square feet unless otherwise authorized by the local agency and an ordinance. The parcels must comply with applicable objective standard of subdivision map act, be served by public water system and municipal sewer system, may not have been created by an urban lot split, and must comply with the housing development provisions added by this bill. If a parcel has been created through the, this subdivision, a local agency is not required to permit further subdivision through an urban lot split. So that's another streamlining approach for smaller projects. Moving on to projects listed under density bonus, this is probably the one that we'll see most, already talking to some individuals about this, most likely to affect our day-to-day work and some of the projects we bring forward to this body, is AB 1287. It's additional density bonuses. It increases the maximum density bonus to nearly 90% for the inclusion of more very low, low-income or moderate-income housing. AB 1287 requires a local jurisdiction to grant an additional density bonus where the housing development would not restrict more than 50% of the total units to moderate-income, lower-income, or very-low-income households. The housing development does not, does any one of the following, provides 24% of the total units to lower-income households, 15% of the total units to very-low-income households, or provides 44% of the total units to moderate-income households. The development provides 5% to 10% additional very, if the development provides 5% to 10% additional very-low-income units, or 5% to 15% additional moderate units, in that case, the development is entitled to an additional density bonus of 20% to 38.75%. For instance, it develop, and it gives an example, the development with 25% very-low-income, 15% plus 10% is entitled to a total density bonus of 88.75%. 50% bonus for 15% very-low income, and plus a 38.75% bonus for an additional 10% very-low income. So this is commonly known as the stacking of density bonuses, so we can really see projects densities increased with this legislation. We anticipate that the development committee is probably going to take advantage of this piece of legislation and the change to density bonus law. Moving on from that, AB 323 clarifies that the sale of affordable units provides that for any, provides that any for-sale units that qualified an applicant for the award of a density bonus must be sold to and occupied by a very-low, low- or moderate-income household for an affordable housing cost and subject to an equity-sharing agreement, or if any such unit is not purchased by an income-qualified household within 180 days after issuance of a certificate of occupancy, then it is sold to a qualified nonprofit housing corporation pursuant to a recorded contract that satisfies the requirements of the Sites of Revenue Taxation Code section. So this is something that we likely will see affect some of our projects. We've processed over the years a handful of density bonus projects that reserved one unit typically for sale to very-low-income households, and we've described to this commission the difficulty in, in getting the right income, the right family in that house and those units. So this piece of legislation kind of strengthens that position where that unit needs to be sold to someone who income, is income-qualified.
Or it goes to a nonprofit or another organization that will rent that property essentially.
Exactly. To a income-qualified household.
More likely what we're going to see is an increase in rentals because of the lack of an ability to qualify for purchase, I would say. So you're going to see an increase in organizations that manage these houses.
501(c)(3) that does that.
Yeah. So it could be an organization like Habitat for Humanity, who actually places residents in for-sale homes where they become the owners, or it could be a housing trust that holds a number of pieces of properties and they're made available to qualifying income households. Moving on to accessory dwelling units, AB 976 makes permanent the prohibition of an owner occupancy requirement for accessory dwelling units. And I think that the piece of, part of the legislation that's important to us more than anything is that owner occupancy is still required to construct a junior accessory dwelling unit. So that obligation hasn't gone away. So if someone wants to have a primary unit in an ADU, they can do it and be absentee property owners, but if you want to have a JAD, you have to be the primary, that has to be your primary residence.
What's the difference between those two, junior?
Typically, it's the size. So a junior ADU has a maximum square footage. I believe it's 500 square feet. I'd have to double-check that. Any, a regular accessory, and it could be part of the existing square footage of the home, so can accessory dwelling unit out by recent changes to legislation. They don't, they don't have to have all the facilities as a regular accessory dwelling unit. They can have some shared facilities with the primary unit.
That makes sense.
Typically, it's, accessory dwelling unit has to have all the facilities, like a kitchen, a bath, and a qualified kitchen. I was going to say one more thing. And then I think the owner occupancy is probably the primary thing, has to be occupied by the primary, the primary residence has to be occupied by, or at least one of the units, either a JADU or the primary residence has to be occupied by the owner.
Yeah. Thank you.
And then another one where, this is something that the city has the option to implement or not, but it basically boils down to selling, the selling and the sale of accessory dwelling units. So this allows agencies to adopt the ordinance to permit separate conveyance of accessory dwelling units and a primary dwelling as condominiums. The ordinance must require the following, that the development is considered a common interest development subject to the California Davis Sterling Act, that the development must be created in conformance of all applicable objective requirements of the subdivision map act and all objective requirements of a local subdivision ordinance. A safety inspection of an accessory dwelling must be conducted before the recording of the condominium plan. The subdivision map or condominium plan cannot be recorded against the property until the lien holder consent, the lien holder can opt not to consent, effectively prohibiting the subdivision. The local agency must provide certain information about the process for converting the development into condominiums on submittal checklists and public information about accessory dwelling units. And number six, the homeowner will be required to notify providers of utilities, including water, sewer, gas, electricity of the condominium creation, and separate conveyance. And finally, if the property is planned, a planned development within an existing association, the proprietor must first obtain the express written authorization of the existing association before recording a condominium map. So again, being, we, the staff hasn't received direction for management to implement this law and make this available. I don't think it's something that we're going to pursue, at least in the near future, but. but obviously, there's the ability to adopt a local ordinance that allows those ADUs to be conveyed separately.
But we can, we can, as a city, we can opt out of that, or?
That's right, it's not a requirement. This is something that's, to some extent, optional, similar to SB 10 that was adopted a few years ago, which allowed greater increases in ADU development.
Is there any recommendation that the Planning Commission would make to leadership as to the direction that you would recommend, adoption or not adoption?
At this point, we're not asking, we're not soliciting that, that recommendation. It's, again, as I mentioned, it's not something that we've been directed to, from management to implement, nor by the city leaders. If that comes down from the City Council to implement this law, then that's something we would bring back to this body as part of a zoning text amendment to allow those sales. And at that time, I think would be appropriate time to make a recommendation on any potential adoption of a local ordinance to implement this law.
Okay.
And finally, AB 1332 requires local agencies to develop a program to, for pre-approved accessory dwelling unit plans by January 1st, 2025. That's something that a lot of local, some local jurisdictions have done. Encinitas comes to mind, the County of San Diego comes to mind, where they have a host of pre-approved plans, where someone could just pick one off the shelf and obtain a building permit fairly quickly. I think the one subject that they'd still have to comply with is grading requirements and those kinds of things. So now, as that be, rather than it being an option, the state's mandating that local jurisdictions adopt those pre-approved plans, and they give, they're giving us a year to do so.
But the developer, owner, homeowner could still, doesn't have to go with one of those plans, they could do something else.
That's just an option available, that, I think the thought process is that by having a pre-approved plan, the permitting process goes much, much quicker, and you can get a unit produced much faster. So that concludes my brief overview. As I mentioned in the, in this memorandum, there's a link at the end of the memorandum that has a much more extensive, in-depth dive into the details of each piece of legislation, and also lists a number of other pieces of legislation that we didn't list here, but we just wanted to give you an overview of the pieces that we thought would affect the Planning Division's work activity and the projects that we bring forward to you in the future.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Well, pre-approved plans, understand that. But as far as like, what about like, because I've heard through the grapevine, people are saying you can actually have a trailer now, and that could be your ADU. Can, how far does it go down into like, you know, manufactured homes? I mean, I understand manufactured homes, they come as a kit, and their walls are all assembled on-site, and it has a slab, and it's different, kind of. But what about like, mobile homes and all that?
So we, in our local ordinance, we allow prefabricated homes, but they have to be on a permanent foundation. So that would precludes, like, often we see these TV shows with tiny homes, and they're on little tiny trailers, and you pull them behind your car. That's not something that the city is engaged in at this time. We've investigated it, and it, there are some real building code issues with those little tiny homes on wheels, so those are, those are not ones that our local ordinance allows at this time.
But, but what about mobile homes? I mean, you take them off, take the wheels off, you put them on jacks, are those considered manufactured homes?
So a manufactured home that, with a state certification, could potentially be used as an accessory dwelling unit with some compatibility requirements that's built into our local ordinance. But again, that, that, that manufactured home would have to be on a permanent foundation.
Okay, that's good.
There's already one in South O., there's already a couple of those in South Ocean Side.
You mean as far as a travel trailer kind of looking?
Not a travel trailer, a mobile, mobile home that has been put on a permanent foundation.
Oh.
And that's allowed under?
They look great.
They look great, okay, well, that's good, as long as they look great. I have no problem about.
Definition is a manufactured.
Amazing what it does for the neighborhood.
Manufactured home, and?
It looks great.
The difference, a manufactured home, if it's put on a, a permanent foundation, it still can be considered personal property unless that manufactured home is built under UBC code, then it can be real estate. So something, if you're ever doing it, I strongly suggest making a few changes at the plant to make it a UBC or, or real property, because when you go to, you know, go to get a mortgage on it, it's more, it's better that it's a real property than personal property.
Yeah. And you don't have to pay any tax on it, any vehicle tax.
Exactly, but it's, it's just real estate versus personal property.
Yeah. Louise, I was being very facetious, by the way.
Well, yeah. I mean, and the other, other question is like, can these manufactured homes, is there a certain age limit, like, to these manufactured homes? Like, if you get a 30-year-old manufactured home that you want to move on to your property, is there something at all to kind of hopefully prevent, not the really great ones that are being built in South O., but, but one that could come over from, you know, I don't know, someplace else that the guy just relocated it from his property in someplace, Timbuktu, to here? I mean, is there like an age restriction? It doesn't have, it can be like 30 years old, 20, or is there any kind of?
So Commissioner Obama, I appreciate the question, I just don't know how to answer it.
I can answer that, because I used to have a license. So, there is no age restriction, but what's different about a manufactured home is that the inspection process happens at a plant, so.
During construction.
So, so our local building department has nothing to do with inspecting the house other than looking at hookups, looking at those kinds of things. So that would be the thing, but I can tell you, 30-year-old manufactured home, you'd be doing some work on it. And if you have to do work technically, you have, it's a whole different realm of law you have to go through. It's not like just.
It's not easy.
Hiring a general contractor. Now you have to go through that third party, which is state, the state monitors that, not the, not the local building department.
I believe, I believe they have to get certified by HCD.
It is, HCD monitors the whole situation.
So there's some, there's some statutes you have to kind of like follow.
There are standards to meet.
You can't just start pulling in mobile homes everywhere.
But I have a follow-up question to it.
Do we have to have, do you have to have sole, one more, then I'm done. Is solar required for ADU?
Yes.
It is required, okay.
So what happens if you have an ADU, and you do want to have a facility that's on wheels, so it's not permanent? Can you pull up with the property for six months at a time and rent that? Is that a legal thing you can do, or?
I don't think it's considered an ADU.
Vice Chair Morrissey, under our local rules, that would not be allowed.
Okay.
It has to be, again, on a permanent foundation to be habitated and rented legally.
Okay.
And you could bring your fifth wheel as your building, your ADU, or what are you talking about?
Well, if you just, you know, there's a big event, and you just want to have, somebody has a motorhome or whatever, and you just want to pull it up on the property and, for three days, whatever.
That's not something that's a problem, is it? Like, like a vacationer that comes by, your aunt, whatever, comes from, you know, Texas and wants to put their fifth wheel on your property for a few days? I mean, that's probably, you can't do that? Oh, you can't do that.
No.
Whoa, forget the.
You only bring it to your home, as I understand it, to prepare it to take it on a trip or something.
All right.
You're not allowed to hook it up to utilities in your own single-family residence, is my understanding.
All right. Wow, well, I think it's going to be kind of the, it's going to, there's going to be some, this is going to bring in some new, some new frontiers for us.
Yes, it is. Is there any other discussion or comments on City Planner's comments?
Thank you, Sergio.
Yeah.
As always, you, appreciate it.
Thank you for doing that.
I see nothing under miscellaneous actions, so we get to City Planner's Commissioners' reports. Will you follow up with, as we go through this? I was wondering when our next meeting is going to be, are you going to, you'll follow up with that?
Yeah, I will certainly say that.
For me, I have no report. Commissioner Obama?
Well, I have kind of like a, not so much a report, but a, I guess a statement in our neighborhood, Southmore Hills, agriculturally-zoned area. We are starting to find various businesses that are coming on to the area, because it's so, you know, it's two-and-a-half acre minimum. So now we have a guy that has a trucking company. We have a guy that has a solar, fire and solar mitigation, not solar, mold and mitigation bill, company that's put on, on site. We have another guy that looks like Sanford and Son back in the old days, where he's got a bunch of like, I don't know, all kinds of motorcycles and things that he parts and he sells. So I've contacted our code enforcement, but is that something that code enforcement can even do, or do I need to go to our city council? What's, what is going to stop uses from coming into our neighborhood in Southmore Hills? Because it's such a large piece of property that people just start doing stuff. Like, it's like the wild, wild west out there.
So, it's a good question, Commissioner Obama. There are, the, the zoning ordinance, as an example, has provisions to allow home occupancies. Part of that, there's some limitations associated with that home occupancy. There's the percentage, I don't know all the rules, I don't have them memorized, but there's a percentage of the home and the garage that could be utilized for that home occupancy. So as an example, if you have a 2,000-square-foot home and you're utilizing 1,500 square feet to run a business, that would be out of compliance with the ordinance. And so code enforcement does have the ability to enforce that.
So they, all these, all of these three that I just mentioned to you have been reported to code enforcement, I just wondered how much teeth they have, and all of them are way over the limits of what their house square footage is, to what amount of their business has taken over the land to do these businesses. I mean, it's, it's kind of like to the point where, you know, I can't believe they would have even, I don't even think they have business licenses, I think they're just running, they're just doing their thing.
Sure, so they would be required to have a business license, a home occupancy permit, and there are limitations on outdoor work that could be done associated with home occupancy. So those are all things, tools that code enforcement can use to enforce the regulations.
So is there, is there something that we, because our Southmore Hills organization's thinking we, we got to start doing a little bit more, because we don't want them just to keep increasing, because now we've gotten three, and we don't know how many more people are going to go, oh, look, you can do this out there, look, I got, just buy my little two-and-a-half acres, and I can just do whatever. So how, would that be more teeth if we actually start to get the whole, the whole association behind it and saying to our city council, we have to get them involved, or is this something that pretty much Olga can handle?
I don't think that city council, bringing the city council at this point would do any good, but perhaps informing the property owners and those that are part of the association of the limitations associated with the home occupancy. I'm happy to send you a copy of the most current ordinance, so you can have that available.
I have that, I have the ordinance, and I will make copies and give them to all those three people, and they, none of those three people are actually members of our association.
Got it.
Probably for reasons why, you know. All right, I just kind of wanted to know, like, so you're not supposed to be able, it's allowed to go into any kind of other zone and just do your business?
Unless it's an ag-related business.
Well, yeah, which we embrace, we want that, but it's, it's just, this is not, not, three of those are ag-related at all.
If it's not one of those uses that are allowed under the zoning ordinance for the ag zone, then I would imagine that it's not permitted, unless it qualifies as a home occupancy and could live with those limitations.
Now, that's, that's a catchy thing, but then that's, like you said, it's like if they have a 3,000-square-foot home and their business is 1,500 square feet that they occupy in their garage, or whatever, even surrounding in their outside area, I can understand that if it's not associated with agriculture, because that's, it's, that's fine. But this is actually way above that, it affects the whole, you know.
So it sounds like something code enforcement could actively enforce, existing rules.
I hope so. We don't know how they're going to take care of it, though. How do you boot, you know, six or seven trailers and three or four tractors, and just, it's like, it's getting out of control. It's like, this one is my neighbor right across the street, which is nice guy, you know? We like the people. It's, can you just?
Have somebody else deliver the letter.
Yeah. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Dodd's?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Anthony?
No report.
Commissioner Malik? Commissioner Ogden?
No report, thank you.
City Planner?
Thank you, Vice Chair Morrissey. So to go to the topic of the next Planning Commission, so currently, we don't have any items scheduled for the meeting on January 8th, so that meeting is likely to be canceled. And we currently don't have any items scheduled for the meeting of January 22nd. So we'll reassess that after the new year to see if that meeting is going to be canceled, and we certainly will keep the Planning Commission informed on when we do have items scheduled and when the next Planning Commission will be held. It doesn't mean that we're not busy, it's just we're in that lull period between application cycles, I believe. Moving on to the City Council, back on January 6th last week, the council upheld the Planning Commission's approval of, I guess that was two weeks ago, Planning Commission's approval of the Avocato Road Project 50, so that project's moving forward. On this Wednesday's meeting, the Planning Commission will be considering the Pacifica project, that townhome project at the old Pacifica Elementary Site in the North Valley Neighborhood Planning Area. And they'll also be considering an update to the STR ordinance with the Planning Commission's recommendations included as part of the report to council, but not included as part of the ordinance that were recommended that they adopt. And then finally, on January 10th, the City Council will be considering the Loma, the appeal of the Loma Alta Terrace's project that this commission considered about a month and a half ago or so. That concludes my report, and I just want to thank you all for your, all your service to the city, and I hope, wish everyone a happy holiday season.
Same to you, sir.
I have a question on the, the last thing, the short-term rental piece. I thought we'd moved to make, to not have that change voted upon, is that correct?
That's correct. So your recommendation to the Planning Commission, or to the City Council, is to not approve what staff was recommending, and that's been reported to the City Council in the report we published for that.
So the Pacifica, is it going before the City Council because it got appealed?
No, the Pacifica project requires a final approval by the City Council because it involves two legislative actions, a change of the general plan amendment, or the general plan designation, and a change in the zoning designation of the property. So everything that this body did on it was just a recommendation to the council on the overall project.
So, if there's nothing else, everyone have a Merry Christmas.
Oh, Merry Christmas.
This, Happy New Year to you, Mr. Ogden. This meeting is adjourned.
So, I've been waiting for you for a long time.